The City Council have come to order. It is Wednesday, February 10, 2010. It's 2:00 PM and City Council is in afternoon session. Good afternoon, Carla.
Good afternoon.
Can you please call the roll?
Fritz?
Yeah.
Fish?
Saltzman?
Here.
Leonard?
Adams?
Here. Staff has done a great job. If Council could turn to this document that everyone had up here, the memo with the approach and discussion and decisions to recap five. The section number one constitutes amendments that have been made to the recommended draft, and those amendments show up in this green document.
I should probably read the title first.
Oh, I apologize, yeah.
Item 223, Improve Land Use Regulations Through the Regulatory Improvement Code Amendment Package 5.
So explain to me where we would see the memorialization of the number-one amend recommended draft.
Many of those are also in a packet with blue document that you received earlier.
Okay.
The green just represents the latest edits in the last few days.
So we would find amendments showing up in the green and in the blue, or only in the blue?
Both.
Both, okay. All right. And then on section number two, on the second page of your February 11th memo, it says "No amendment to recommended draft," and that's based on council feedback last time, right?
Mr. Harries, you didn't, you heard testimony but chose or didn't tell us to change anything.
And I will, let's go through the rest of it, and then I'll go through and do some motions and do some amending.
We can do the motions at the end of each section, whichever works better for you.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion moved to amend the recommended draft as listed in the February 11, 2010 memo from Eric Ingstrom, principal planner, sections number one and two.
They're moved.
They're moved and seconded.
You should probably be clear about which box you checked, because the...
We're going, that's the next section. I'm just doing the first two numbers.
Okay, got it.
So is there any discussion on these, this motion? Anyone wish to testify on this motion before we vote?
And may I just run through the list, if anybody's watching at home. So that's wind turbines and view corridors, solar panels, courtyard housing with shared courts, accessory dwelling units, long-term bicycle parking. And that's with the amendment to increase to 1.5 spaces. And the, going back to courtyard housing, that's with an amendment to the code to specify the required open space in shared courts where there's parking, which is in response to input from East Portland. We're also doing the minimum lot size in our 2.5 zone in West Portland Park as amended, utility lines in environmental zones, zone change criteria particularly with respect to transportation planning, a few minor wording changes in typos, and water cisterns. And then also not amended from the recommended draft, wind turbines, courtyard housing density, courtyard housing building coverage, courtyard housing minimum density, loading spaces, fences, upgrades to non-conforming development, and the overall process.
Anyone wish to testify on the amendments, or on the motion? All right. Carla, can you please call the vote on the motion?
Fritz?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. So amended. We're now on page two of four. We're in the second areas. Commissioner Fritz and I have worked on these, given her extensive background and interest, and we have recommendations to the council on this section here. Do you have that? Do we have another copy for Commissioner Saltzman?
The memo with the green pages.
I've got the green pages.
I don't think it's...
Sorry. They're right here, right now.
Okay. Thanks.
So, wind turbines, the, we recommend the first option under 1A, which is to amend the recommended draft to increase maximum rotor sweep areas in commercial zones 50 square feet, sorry, residential zones in 50 square feet, and in commercial zones 150 square feet. Terms of maximum height on wind turbines, to amend the recommended draft, increase maximum height of building-mounted turbines to 50% of the base height or 45 feet above the roof, whichever is left. Less, 1C on design review, move to amend the recommended draft as shown in option one, attachment A dated February 5, 2010, for full exemption. And on page three of four?
We should probably just do the wind turbines. And if I might mention that the legislative intent is that we would ask Planning Commission to come back to what's in it, to do, to Planning Bureau to do a review and come back in a couple of years to let us know how this is going. We're not proposing to put on a specific sunset because of the concern we want to encourage this development and for folks to know that it's going to be available. We did hear, I heard some concerns from neighbors and others. Your staff was extremely helpful in letting me know what the scope of this is likely to be, and that it's likely to be somewhat minimal, so I'm comfortable with moving forward with it as recommended.
I would note one thing on this, is we did, your feedback add that this exemption does not supersede the scenic view corridor rules or the historic designer view rules.
Thank you.
So I'd entertain a motion on section one related to wind turbines and the choices that we've made and that we've just discussed and I have verbalized.
A vote.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any discussion of this motion? Carla, can you please call the vote on the motion?
Fritz?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Commissioner Fritz, would you take us through the number two?
This is extending eaves into the setbacks, and as the mayor and I and the staff discussed, it turns out that there's some pretty neighborhood-specific issues with the character of neighborhoods and the desired character of neighborhoods. So my recommendation and what I move is to amend the recommended draft not to include this provision and ask the Portland plan staff to include this in determination of neighborhood character more specifically tailored.
Is there a second?
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Discussion of the motion. Anyone wish to vote on the motion?
Testify. You said vote.
Anyone wish to testify on the motion? Sorry, I'm...
I apologize that I was late. We have a brief council discussion on this point, just to bring me up to date.
Yes. So Commissioner Fritz and I got together to recommend some choices for council consideration, and on the eaves, extending the eaves into the setbacks issues, we realized as part of our discussion that there were neighborhood, the context in different neighborhoods was different. The context around eaves in Laurelhurst is different than the context in Arnold Creek, and that we actually, that there is less disagreement around the eaves issue than when you look at it in a neighborhood context-specific manner. And so the commissioner's motion is to send it back to the Planning Commission to staff as part of the Portland plan to figure exactly that out.
And this has your support, here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Anyone wish to testify? Carla, can you please call the vote on the motion?
Fritz?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. Retaining walls. We are suggesting the second and third options, the idea being that we take immediate action, as we heard in testimony, to address the problems that were identified as part of testimony, but at the same time, consider that as binding but provisional, giving the Planning Commission an opportunity to look at whether what we've suggested and put in place has any negative, unintended consequences that we might not be aware of. Is that fair?
Yeah, if I might just add to that, this shows that showing up at the last public hearing after a two-year process can make a difference, and that citizens came in with some very compelling test, I think one citizen came in with compelling testimony and others sent emails about this issue, which had not been part of the package, but which the mayor and I agree is an egregious enough problem that we'd like to accept staff's recommendation for how to fix it for right now. We also greatly value the Planning Commission's workers, volunteers who diligently look into all of the ins and outs of the proposals that come to us. So we want to put it into the code with its six-month sunset so that the Planning Commission has an opportunity to review the good suggestion from staff as to how to fix this problem, possibly send it right back to us and say this is exactly what we need, or send it back with amendments, but to do it in an expeditious manner while still taking care of the problem right now.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Back up.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the motion. Would anyone like to testify on the motion? Carla, would you please call the vote on the motion?
Fritz?
And again, thank you to the citizens and to the staff for coming up with a rapid response to this problem. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
I apologize, but I just got, I'm sorry to, too loud. I just got lost on that. Are you moving both the second and third recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
They're not mutually exclusive.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We should do a lot more policy this way with a multiple choice elected. It's very good. So we're in section number four, still on page three of four, related to lots in the R5 zone. Our recommendation is move not to amend the recommended draft regarding this matter, and so adopt this provision, which would add a minimum lot size for vacant lots. It's related to, so that's 4A. 4B is related to refer this issue back to the Planning Commission for further work. And we have C and D on page four of four, to move to recommend that the recommended draft to not adopt this provision, the current five-year waiting period would remain unaltered, so status quo. And then on D, regarding property lines, move to allow property line adjustments only if both lots will be developed with attached houses. So discussion on this section related to remnant buildable lots.
I have a question on 4D. Have there been some conversations about helping that for five to 10 years? What is the recommendation here on the waiting period?
It would remain as five years under the options we put here.
And that's what it is now?
Right.
Okay.
Is there, is there a good argument for kicking it to 10 years?
We observed when the market was hot that the five-year waiting period was not a disincentive for demolition. In the current climate, I don't think that's a problem, so we have some time to figure that out.
Other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the recommendations for number, what you just stated for lots in the R5 zone.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Additional council discussion?
Could I clarify something really quick?
Yes.
For 4D, that's the corner lot provisions. You had stated that you were inclined to move to allow property line adjustments only for attached houses on corners. Do you want minimum lot sizes to be established for those or not? Because right now, the recommendation is that those would have a 1,600 square foot minimum lot size. So the second box, the second motion, would eliminate that 1,600 square foot lot size. So there's kind of two questions here. Do you want to allow attached houses on corners and detached houses on corners?
No, just attached.
Just attached, okay. So that's the motion. And if it's just attached, do they have minimum lot sizes or not?
But shouldn't, I mean, this seems, I mean, the upshot of this is significant. Shouldn't we have some more further public discussion before we make a decision like this that includes the housing community and others?
The intent of this is to keep it as in the current provision, where in the R5 zone you can have an attached house, a duplex on a corner. So that's what the intent of this is.
And you can do that whether you have pre-existing lots or not. You can go through a land division, and that's, that's consistent with that, correct?
But I guess I'm asking, have we done enough outreach for people affected by this so people know what we're doing here today?
The current language is very recent at your request. The basic proposal, the discussion of what to do about these corner lots went through a stakeholder committee with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and BDS over two summers ago, and then into last fall, where there was quite a bit of discussion. So there's, there's a lot of awareness about this issue and that we've been talking about it.
I understand that, but what we're specifically prepared to adopt has that...
Is there consensus around this among stakeholder groups?
I think what you're prepared to adopt is a reflection of what you've talked about since our last hearing.
But we, that's not my question, though. My question is, I mean, I get that it's what we've talked about, but...
I think the answer is no, there hasn't been a great deal since the, this has come up at the council level.
I think that we need to do that. I'm not comfortable just sitting here and having an individual take a point of view without making sure that we have had a broader discussion.
We currently have in the code a provision that says that any R5 lot on a corner can be developed with a duplex. So that has been in the code, has been widely accepted, perhaps not widely liked in neighborhoods where they thought there was only going to be one house, but now there are two. But it is something which has worked well and which has provided infill housing. So that, the intent of this amendment is to make that apply regardless of whether there's a underlying, a second underlying lot or not. And that has been, before skinny lots were invented or discovered, that was how you got two houses on the, on the corner. There were, so the duplex concept tends to be more affordable. You're also allowed to do accessory dwelling units on corner lots by right, which again allows the development of a small, by the amendments which we're going to adopt, an 800 square foot footprint home as an accessory dwelling unit on a corner. So there are options for developing on corner lots, and the intent of this, of this amendment is to make the same apply.
There may be, but we do have a process that we try to listen to what our ideas are and how they affect people in the community, and we have, doesn't sound like we've done that, and I think we should do that.
Well, I, I think what came out of, what did come out of Planning Commission was a recommendation that we would allow for detached houses on corners, and we would also allow for attached houses on corners. What's on the table today, based on Mayor Adams and Commissioner Fritz's recommendation, is to tighten that a bit and only allow for attached houses on corners. So that's the motion that I think is on the table.
I understand that, but I'm just wondering why we don't send this back for, for the discussion.
So is it just, Commissioner Leonard, is it just 4D, or is it other letters under 4 that you have a concern with?
Well, I'm, I just know from having been here for seven-plus years that these are issues that there are a lot of emotion around, and it just feels like a little bit this is going on the fly, and, and I want to make sure I understand what we're doing, and the best way to do that is to hear from people who are affected by it, both in a neighborhood and builders.
So that's all for everything under 4?
Mm-hmm.
Other discussion?
Would that be something the Development Review Advisory Committee would be inappropriate?
Them and, you know, maybe the Planning Commission should have another discussion about this, but definitely the Development Review Advisory Committee should be at least aware that we're getting ready to do something different than what's been discussed.
Well, is another alternative just to sever this piece and put it over for two weeks and give people a chance to, by letter or testimony, come in and then take it up again?
Yeah.
I'd rather keep it at council, frankly, than take it back to the Bureau. Fine with me?
No, I'm more concerned that people just know what we're doing.
So if you can make it three weeks, that would be fine.
Three weeks is fine. Will you accept a friendly amendment of three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay. For the whole A, so...
For...
Four.
For four.
Sorry, for four. So we, there's council consensus that we will make final decisions, we'll bring this back in three weeks to deal with numeral four.
And will you guys make sure we notify DrAC and the affected, you know who the usual suspects are?
Yeah, no, I know who to call.
Okay.
Well, if I might just follow, conclude this discussion, we did have the hearing, we had testimony, we had consideration. It's certainly within council's responsibility to consider and sometimes amend Planning Commission's recommendation, and so that's part of what we're doing here, I believe. But I'm happy to defer to your request to have a little more time for consideration on that.
Is it possible to adopt the rest of it and just bring this one section back, or do I just delay gratification?
No, you can, you can adopt everything else that's...
On section four back at a later time?
Because this is just a tentative decision today, so I think we can do that. I would feel, and I think staff who's been working on this, with this exemption, I would like to do that. So are there folks that would like to testify on the now amended proposal? Has anyone signed up? Okay, then...
I think what we need is a motion to, to, to hold this over for three weeks. You described this as a friendly amendment, so I think we need to vote on that amendment to bring it back in three weeks?
Bring back number four.
Bring back number four in three weeks so the record is clear that that's...
They're moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded that we would continue the discussion on, we'll, the section number four, and bring it back in three weeks for further consideration, and at the intervening time, we will do outreach to stakeholders.
Two questions. One is if we could get the specific date that we come back on?
Sure.
And we won't have to re-notify. The other is whether you want to hold second reading for all of these on the same date or... or if you want to pass the first part to second reading next week.
Let's do the first part to second reading next week.
Okay. So we'll have two effective dates.
And two ordinances.
Is that going to be just a total pain in the -- if it is, we--
Yes.
If it is, I will delay gratification.
Aren't you just cutting and pasting here? I mean, we're just--
No, it's two separate ordinances, two separate appeals, two separate if it gets to that.
Would the maker of the motion, that I requested, please withdraw?
A motion? I just want to be clear, so--
We'll hold the whole thing over for consideration in three weeks.
The whole thing, so we'll be taking testimony on everything or just on four?
It's a second reading.
The second reading.
In three weeks, we return for--
Second reading.
No, in three weeks, we would return for discussion on item number four, and we'll give you feedback on the public outreach we've done, and then a week after that. So the fourth week, we'll do second reading on everything.
That's fine. I mean, it's, you know--
And is that okay?
Sorry, but, you know, Commissioner Leonard raised a legitimate question, and I think we'll just -- we're going to pass something, really. I keep saying that.
And you can choose to close testimony on the other items.
We can today? Oh, okay. Can we today?
If you hold the -- I think you can close off testimony today. If you do something different on item four, then I think you're going to have to allow additional testimony at that time.
Yeah.
Different than what is already being presented here today among the options.
But we could close testimony for all the other items except for item number four.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, you can close testimony for all the other items.
The purpose of this hearing was to have testimony on these amendments, and so if there is a further amendment on number four at the next hearing, then I would suggest we reopen it for that, but otherwise, nobody is here to testify on--
We agree.
-- the proposal that's on the table, so we could pass it all to second reading. No, we can't -- yeah, pass it to second reading in three weeks, with the understanding that we would have a discussion about number four before voting in three weeks.
So I move that we close testimony on all items of recap five, except issues related to number four. And do we vote on this?
Well, I think what -- we have a current motion on the floor to bring just issue four back in three weeks. My understanding, if I'm correct, is that Commissioner Fish has withdrawn that--
Motion is now withdrawn.
-- withdrawn. Then we can proceed to the motion to close the testimony on all these items.
Except for four.
No, including four, because if nothing is changed when we come back in three weeks, if we--
And that was my understanding, is if nothing is changed on four, then the testimony can be closed today, but if something new comes up on four when you're discussing it in a couple of weeks, then you would have to take in testimony at that time.
And somebody would move an amendment to four--
Correct.
-- and then we would take testimony on the amendment.
Or alternatively, we'd move to suspend the rules, as we did yesterday, to take testimony.
Exactly.
I'm comfortable with that approach, ma'am.
So the motion is to close testimony on everything?
The mo--
Just move to second reading. You don't have to have a motion.
So I move that we close testimony on recap five, barring the need for further discussion on room -- on number four, as noted in the February 11th, 2010 memo.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of this motion? Carly, can you please call the vote on the motion?
Fritz?
I want to say this several times. This has been an enormous amount of staff work, and I really appreciate it all. Aye.
Fish?
I very much appreciate that the mayor and Commissioner Fritz got together and came up with some new language. I want to echo what the mayor said, that this cheat sheet is particularly on these planning issues, Amy, is a real advance, or whoever prepared this, so we appreciate that. Thank you. Aye.
Who prepared?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Great. Nice job.
Saltzman?
Thanks to staff. Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye. All right, we stand in recess until 3 o'clock.
Thank you.
On Thursday, February 11th, 2010, we are back from recess. Carla, can you please call the roll?
Prince?
Here.
Fish?
On Thursday, February 11th, 2010, we are back from recess. Carla, can you please call the roll?
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Adams.
Here. So, can you please read the title for time certain, item number 224?
Adopt the Portland Bicycle Plan for 2030 to Create a New 20-Year Vision for Further Integrating Bicycling into Daily Life in Portland.
So, if staff would please come forward and have a seat. The first thing I would like us to do is to consider, by way of motion, to amend this peach-colored And this is, these changes are some, since we had extra time, we're able to perfect the document even more, and they're responsive to some of the council discussion last week. Ellen, do you want to highlight anything from this?
One of the things that came up in testimony was the fact that we didn't have a north-south route through Gabriel Park. That was in deference to our colleagues in Parks and Recreation who had felt that the existing route through the park north of Vermont Creek was too much through very active park areas to be a bikeway, a dedicated bikeway. And, but, but last week, we were able to meet on, or earlier this week on Monday with our colleagues in Parks and actually agreed on a conceptual alignment towards the western edge of the park. That will, would, assuming that we were able to identify some funding for that, it would require a bridge, which would require environmental review. But at least we do have, as Keith Leiden requested, a line on the map, so that, that's one of the amendments.
It's on the western, western edge of Gabriel Park?
The western edge of the park, just to the east of Southwest 45th Avenue. And the exact alignment would need to be worked out in the project development phase, but, but as a concept, we've agreed that we can have a route through the park that will be a multi-use trail, so it'll be pedestrian and bicycle, but it would be designed for a little bit higher-speed bicycle travel as opposed to the kind of winding pedestrian path that exists now in the park. And that will really be a very key connection from Multnomah Village to the community center, so we're very, very happy to have reached that agreement with Parks. The other, the only other thing I'd really highlight is the concerns that were raised by the representatives from the Portland Freight Committee. We did work with them to craft some annotation that we'll add in the plan to clarify the intent of our classifications. And just to reiterate, the balance that the transportation system plan calls for in examining classifications for different modes. So where we are suggesting a classification for bicycles on a roadway that is, for example, as was mentioned in testimony, a priority truck street, there won't be anything developed there that interferes with the function of this street as a priority truck street.
Okay. I'd move the salmon-colored second. Thank you. Council discussion on-
Very excited, second.
Amendment.
I have a couple more questions that most, I have you doing a fantastic job of responding to testimony. There was a question about Holgate and the Woodstock neighborhood, and I don't see that on here.
Yes, well, I did write about that in the memo that I sent you. We did look at Holgate, but Mr. Hegeman asked us to consider adding a specific project to put across in there, and our feeling was that that really is, that we have so many deficiencies on our existing bikeway network, that's one of them, but to, that we intend to address deficiencies like that through area improvement plans. And so that's really how we intend to address that one as well, rather than calling out a specific improvement just at that location, when we have so many deficiencies around the system that are of a similar kind of lack in our system, so.
And is that a similar answer to the issue that someone raised about in Sellwood, about whether it should be 14th or 15th or 16th?
In Sellwood, we had previously met with Mr. Noddy and talked about the fact that the plan has enough flexibility that in project development, if we couldn't make a safe crossing at 14th, we could easily move the route to 16th. My feeling was, well, if they keep saying they want 16th, we'll move to 16th. But actually, when we talked to them further, they're in agreement with us that 14th, if we can solve the problem of the crossing at Bybee, is a superior route. So we've agreed to leave it there for the time being, and if in project development we can't make a safe crossing at 14th and Bybee, then we would reconsider the route. But in looking at that area, we actually discovered a little discrepancy on where we had indicated the bike boulevard following Southeast 13th for a block, that, or two blocks. It doesn't, that doesn't really work because of the volumes on 13th. So we've actually, in the amendments here, added a block of Southeast Knapp to make the connection between the Sellwood Boulevard and Southeast 14th.
And you have done a tremendous job of addressing specific concerns. So in general, if something comes up in the future where it turns out that when we go to do something, that conditions have changed, or we find out new information, what would be the process that the plan would be amended in the future, or that bicycle, bikeways might be built in a slightly different location?
Well, there are two things. One is that we can amend the plan in the future, and we are coming back to council a year from now and five years from now to report on progress, so at those, you know, those kinds of technical amendments could be made. Also, nothing that we've done in the plan takes effect until it is adopted into the transportation system plan by ordinance, so there will be a further public process for vetting these changes. But the other thing is that in, in our plan, it specifically says that in project development we may need to make some changes, because obviously at a planning level, for a citywide plan, we can't have gotten everything exactly right. When we get down to the project level and are working with the stakeholders on the actual project, there may be little changes of route. One of the things that came up in public comment was the question of Northeast 9th versus Northeast 11th, that's a similar concern. You know, at that level, we'll be able to get that right when we get to the project.
And my final question is, I know you also did wonderful work on the pedestrian master plan, and the concerns were raised about whether the bicycle plan trumps, or, talk to me a little bit about how we will make decisions if there's only enough room for pedestrian or bicycle facilities on a particular roadway.
Yes, so we did add one final change this morning, based on your suggestion, Commissioner Fritz. If you look on the backside of the salmon amendments, there's a action item that we're adding under 5.1E that just reminds us to address pedestrian travel needs when we're implementing bike lanes or other bicycle facilities on roadways that have no sidewalks. But also, in thinking about how these things are, are determined, you know, the, the transportation system plan gives us classifications for all the streets, those classifications get weighed in the course of, of doing a project, and many other considerations about the, the various modal networks, their connectivity, get weighed in determining what gets built. I think that in Southwest, where we have the, the greatest maybe difficulty with streets that have neither sidewalk nor bike lanes, you know, trying to make sure that we accommodate everybody, the, the real answer, as we've said in the plan, is to build complete streets, but that's not always the first thing that we can do. So as we do these interim bicycle improvements, we will definitely be looking to address that question of how are we providing for pedestrian travel on those streets?
Thank you, and I know that transportation is committed to community outreach with each particular project, so there will be opportunities for community members to be involved during that phase.
Yes, and the funding that we understand is going to build some sidewalks now will help with that, too.
Thank you very much.
And all of those sidewalk projects will be adding bicycle facilities, I believe, as well.
Thank you.
Sellwood Gap?
The Sellwood Gap. So, the Sellwood Gap is actually in our plan, it's, it's, that section of the trail is classified as a, or recommended to be classified as a major city bikeway. It is, it's in the project as a world-class project, and currently it is actually funded, but because Metro, which owns the property, has a use agreement with the rail user, and they have not been able to negotiate a deal for the trail, for the location of the trail there, the thought right now is to spend the money that they have to build the trail to make the on-street improvements on Southeast 19th and Southeast Dumontella, to make the actual connection work with on-street facilities. So we would be trying to do a very nice bicycle boulevard connection. But the project-
The idea, though, is if, if and when Metro reaches an agreement with the property owner, the Sellwood Gap would be-
The Sellwood Gap is still in the plan, it's still a project, and it would be really the preferred route, because it's the major city bikeway route, as opposed to the city bikeway route that the boulevard would follow.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion on the amendments? Does anyone wish to testify on the motion?
We had three people sign up-
Is on the motion?
On the amendments.
Huh?
On the amendments.
Oh, you had a sign-up sheet?
For amendments.
Okay. Any other discussion from council with this panel of staff? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I had an amendment.
We have a different amendment on the floor?
Are we, we're taking these up in sequence, Sam?
We're going to take the amendments wanted. We're, we're taking this as one amendment.
All right, and we're taking testimony on this?
Apparently, yes.
We have two people now, Greg Lavender and Daniel Garwood. Please come on up.
So this is on the salmon-colored amendments.
Hi, welcome to City Council.
You just give us your first and last name, and that clock will count down three minutes.
Hello, my name is Greg Lavender. I'm here visiting from the Woodlawn neighborhood in northeast Portland. I'm sorry, I was in another meeting, I got in here late. I just want to thank all of you for your hard work, and I'm looking forward to an unanimous vote. I know that there, I didn't get to hear the amendments today, I'm sure they're really important, but we can work out details later. I'm really looking forward to a 5-0 vote. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lavender.
Hi, my name is Daniel Garwood. I'm here visiting from New York.
Ah, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all you guys for making Portland a very easy city to get around. It's just, it's, I mean, I'm jealous, you know, New York, you know what's going on with transportation in New York. I have to say that. You guys know what's what. Thank you for that.
That's awesome, thank you for coming in.
Are you thinking of relocating to Portland?
After visiting, it's a possibility.
You would be welcome.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leonard is our ambassador and runs the Rose Festival, so if you need some tips in your transition, check with him.
Unfortunately, Commissioner Fish is from New York, and so he's filled our New York quota, so.
Yeah.
Thanks so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your testimony. All right. Carla, can you please call the roll on the amendment contained in the salmon-colored paper?
Fritz?
I truly appreciate when citizens come in after a very long process, make good points, and staff responds. Thank you so much. Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Yeah, I appreciate the thorough staff work between now and last week. Aye.
Leonard?
Aye.
Adams?
Thanks for the amendment. Aye. All right. Any other amendments?
Yes, I have an amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, last week I suggested an amendment that would use the utility license fees collected over and above current projections as a funding mechanism to implement the bicycle master plan. Since that time, I've met with the city's bicycle advisory committee to review this potential funding proposal, and I appreciated their thoughts and suggestions, which are articulated in the letter that was sent to us yesterday. And as usual, there's a lot of wisdom in their letter, and I have decided to follow their wisdom, and I am asking that we incorporate the suggestion of my potential funding amendment into the finance plan committee that will be convened by the mayor to look at financing options. I do think this is a viable option, and I think it should be looked at by the finance plan, and that's basically, I would have resolved, which I can read if you want me to, but it's right in front of you, that would simply say that we look at this idea as part of the finance plan for the bicycle master plan. So I would move that amendment.
There a second? Motion fails. So, what I want to do for the record, having talked to my colleagues, is to offer what I think is the kind of funding approach that this plan really deserves. This is a national, international-class bike strategy. And we, I'm concerned that highlighting a very speculative funding source, that in the best-case scenario, we wouldn't see revenues from for three to five years, and it ends up that, based on your first description of this amendment, actually turns out to be very different, you, you came to learn is actually a very different funding source, so it's even more speculative. I think this plan deserves better in terms of, of funding source. So, what I will do, and I want to make sure that my council is supportive of this as they vote, or offer comments at any time before we vote, is that I will return to the council with a, within 30 days, with a kickstart fund, with a kickstart funding option for council to consider of $20 million, the resources of which will be derived from taking some of the savings that we have received in the Bureau of Environmental Services. We're getting very good contract savings in the Bureau of Environmental Services, and where bicycle boulevards and green streets meet is actually on the street. And a lot of what's required to make a bike boulevard are actually the same things used in green street treatments. So I'll be coming back using savings, both administrative savings, and also the big pipe is winding down, so some of the communications expenditures and BS are not as necessary. So between contract savings and the wind-down savings from the big pipe, I'll be coming back with a kickstart, one time, but $20 million, to help get this plan going. We then get, take advantage of the great contracting climate that exists right now. And because we will also make sure that the $18 million that I proposed to use, a portion of the transportation, new state transportation resources, of $18 million used on sidewalks, we will come back with the streets where we will do sidewalk improvements and/or green street improvements and bikeway improvements as called for in this plan. So I'll be doing that, and then the, the financing task force work will continue, because that's just going to be $20 million of one-time funding, but it shows, this council, by, by moving forward with this, shows our support for getting going and getting going with a bang. So that is my legislative intent moving forward, and would just like to hear, as we vote on this, any thoughts of support from my colleagues. So, do we have anyone signed up for the plan itself?
No.
Okay.
Submit sign-up sheet.
All right, then please call the roll.
Fritz?
A lot of hard work has gone into this plan, and it's really great that many folks came back this week to listen to us vote, and I appreciate especially the staff work. There's an enormous amount of staff work that has gone into this, and it's excellent work, so thank you so much. What's exciting about this is it's a plan that's not going to sit on the shelf, it's a plan that's going to be in almost daily use, and that even when folks are walking and biking around places that don't have them, they'll be able to say, well, this is in the plan, and it's going to be coming up at some point, I'll be able to be on a more safe and comfortable route to wherever you want to go to. So I applaud all the effort, I'm glad to hear that we're going to have a long-term strategy for funding. And we, what the, I've received a lot of concern about the $600 million, as well as a lot of support for the $600 million. And my belief is that we need to provide basic services in all 95 neighborhoods, that walking and bicycling are certainly basic, having a, a smooth surface and a safe surface, that whether you're in a wheelchair or on a bicycle, on a, have a stroller, or that you're pedestrian, is something that is a basic service in every neighborhood. And all of us want all of our citizens to be safe as they move around our city, that those who would never get on a bike, don't want to get on a bike, are kind of nift that other people might be on bikes, it's still in their best interest to fund safe bicycle and pedestrian facilities so that there aren't collisions, because none of us wants to be in a collision, whether it's a vehicle, automobile-to-bike collision, or whether it's a bike-to-pedestrian collision, or bike-to-bike, or any of those. We want, we want safe streets in our neighborhoods, and that, to me, is what this, this plan is all about. It's looking about how to make freight and pedestrian and bicycles and all the other important modes, the major traffic streets, the parking, the businesses, and all the things that work in a major city, which is what we're becoming, that's what this plan is about, and so I'm very happy to support it. I am glad to see the attention to neighborhoods and communities that have been disadvantaged and continue to be disadvantaged. I think that that's an important part of this plan, which we all will pay attention to. I'm glad to see the part about education and peer pressure, peer encouragement, to have all modes be careful about each other and about the different modes. And we had a doctor from OHSU came to testify in Citizen Communications a couple of weeks ago about the importance of bike helmets, and the tragedies that happen when people don't wear helmets. And so it's little things and big things all rolled into this amazing package, which I very much support, and I'm, I'm glad to see that there's attention to the different modes and the respect, which is what this plan is about. So thank you to Mayor Adams, thank you to Ellen and Roger and the entire team, thank you to the citizen groups, the Southwest Trails Group, the Technical Advisory Committee, the Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Portland Freight Committee, the Willamette Pedestrian Coalition, and in particular, thanks to Amanda Mansfield in my office, who has diligently followed this in the 13 months that we have been here, and I'm very happy to support it. Aye.
Fish?
Well, thank you. Mayor, this is your moment, and I will be very brief. This would not have happened without your leadership, and you deserve the credit for this plan, and I fully support the legislative history that you've put forth for the council for a funding mechanism. I, too, want to thank Ellen and Roger and Catherine for the time they spent educating me. I also want to thank Mia Burke, who played an indispensable role behind the scenes, making sure everyone in the council had the information they needed. And of course, the advocacy community from the BTA on, down the line, that took time to- And of course, the advocacy community from the BTA on down the line that took time to educate us and take time to come to our offices and make sure we understood this plan. And I also appreciate all the people that reached out to us with their concerns, as well as their support. I cannot think of a public process which has been more inclusive and that has-- where more time has spent collecting input from all stakeholders. But today, the credit goes to our mayor for his leadership in crafting this ambitious and focused plan, and for the way you've handled the public process to this point. This plan will make bicycling a cornerstone of Portland's sustainable transportation system, adding over 300 miles of bikeways, promoting bicycling for short trips, and prioritizing planning and funding of improvements that enhance our sustainable transportation system. And it will focus on equity, working to bring access to safe, comfortable, and, I'm pleased to say, family-friendly bikeways to all Portlanders. And as the father of a six-year-old who's getting his first bike soon, this is particularly important to me. I'm also frankly, mayor, excited that, under this plan, we'll-- we are committing to beginning an ambitious planning for a regional system of bike trails with a special focus on off-road trails. And I-- at your direction, I've taken a leadership role, both in Forest Park and in Gateway Green, trying to jumpstart processes to imagine how we can significantly expand our capacity in off-road cycling and doing so in a way that respects our environmental tradition. Here in Portland, we are proud, justifiably, of our commitment to sustainable policies and practices, and we are proud that we are consistently ranked at the top of bike-friendly cities nationwide. This plan, which has rightly been called the best of its kind in the country, will help us remain the country's leader in biking. Thank you again, mayor and my colleagues, and I'm pleased to vote aye.
Saltzman?
Well, I want to thank Mayor Adams and the staff, Ellen, Roger, Catherine, all the other people, Bicycle Transportation Alliance, who have helped participate in this wonderful plan before us. It's an ambitious plan, and that's as it should be. We are a city of ambitious people, and we often-- you know, if we ever waited to figure out the funding before we did something, we'd never have streetcars. So I remember Charlie Hill. He-- you know, if we didn't figure out-- if we didn't have the funding figured out, we would have never-- if we had to have it figured out first, we would have never had the streetcars. So you have to be ambitious and shoot for the stars. And so this is-- this is a plan that does that. We may not have every funding source nailed down yet, and while I like the concept of what I just heard of the jumpstart package, I also have to caution that, as the commissioner in charge of the Bureau of Environmental Services, I need to examine how this will impact our ratepayers who are-- but the idea-- the concept, I'm fully prepared to embrace, but I need to see the details on that. But I do think this is a step forward, and you have the commitment of this council to figure out a way to pay for this plan one way or the other. There are many options in front of us to do this. And once again, we will enjoy the leadership that this city-- as we just heard from the gentleman from New York City, the accolades that we deserve for having a community that cycles and having the rest of us, who maybe don't cycle as much, want to make sure that everybody is safe and everybody shares the rights of way and the roads and paths. So I'm pleased to vote aye.
Leonard?
Certainly, in Portland, being associated with passing a bicycle master plan is a popular thing to do, but it would not be fair to not acknowledge that the devil is in the details. And having been one who has championed causes in the past, as popular as they may sound, at first, it involves a lot of very difficult, meticulous, hard work to develop a plan, particularly one such as comprehensive as the bicycle plan seen before. So I would just tell you from my own experience and observations, as much as each of us here might like to take credit for where we're at on this, it wouldn't have happened without the leadership of Mayor Adams. He forged the work group that worked on this. He has led it through to this point. And as I have learned, not only do you have to look ahead of you when you're leading, sometimes you have to look behind you. And that notwithstanding, he's successfully navigated the barriers to successfully passing a major initiative like this. He has my respect and admiration for doing that. I think his idea for the $20 million kickstart is ingenious. It ties, in my humble view, our desire to build smarter streets and sidewalks, and yes, bikeways, with the impact it has on our streams and rivers. If nobody thinks that's not important, we have learned here in Portland, given the project Commissioner Saltzman's involved in with the big pipe, that anything we can do to mitigate the impact of rainwater or runoff on our rivers makes a lot of sense. Tying bicycling to that makes a lot of sense. Bicycles obviously don't create the polluted runoff that automobiles do, that end up in our curbs and in our drain water system, and thus the Willamette River and other byways. So I think it's actually an ingenious approach to a very complex problem. So I'm just pleased to be in the position here to be able to do my part, which is just to vote aye.
Adams?
Well, I want to thank the city council for their kind remarks, and Commissioner Fritz, who-- because we're in voting, passed me a note saying that you support the fast-start funding approach proposal. And all I need is you to sign it.
Thank you.
Get it notarized, and we'll be good to go. I'm very lucky. I get to wake up in the morning and not only work with a great city council, but a group of folks in transportation that are second to none, I would say, in the entire globe for innovations around mobility and doing it in a way that is sustainable, the triple bottom-line sustainability. It's inspiring to work with you. I appreciate your work. I learn-- have learned so much, and I'm really thrilled to have been-- have worked with you over the last five years to get this to where we are today. So Roger Geller, Ellen Van Der Slies, Mark Laird, Denver, Igarde, Sarah Figliozoni, otherwise known as Sarah, Sue, Paul Smith, John Rist. I also want to underscore my thanks for the Bicycle Transportation Alliance, especially Michelle, who's, I think, going on your last couple days here, who's been the key representative on this project. Your work has been invaluable. Really appreciate it. Also want to thank the chairs of the steering committee and the entire steering committee, but the co-chairs were Mia Burke and Jay Graves. So-- and finally, my own team, Catherine Chiarello, Katja Dilman, also Tom Miller and the entire mayor's office staff. Thank you very much. I'm pleased to vote aye and return to council in 30 days with a fast-start $20 million injection to getting this plan going. And we are adjourned.